Call this meeting to order. This is a legally constituted meeting of the Town and Childlight Planning Board. Legal notice of this meeting has been posted in the Gates of Childlight News and on the bulletin board in the front vestibule of the Town Hall. Please silence or turn off your pagers and cell phones. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for her.
In the event of an emergency, please use the exits in the front and the rear of the room. We will proceed with the agenda in the order in which it was published, and unless otherwise stated. When called to the podium, please state your name, and if you are representing an applicant, indicate the applicant's name. Review the details of the application. Planning Board members and side table participants will address questions and concerns to the applicant or their representative for the public hearing portion of the meeting. Anyone wishing to comment on the application will be heard. If you wish to speak, please wait to be recognized by the chairperson. Stand, state your name and address for the record. Please speak so that all can hear your comments and address all comments and questions to the chairperson. I will now introduce the Board members and the side table participants. My far left is Joe Defendis, Matt Emmons. Sitting in for the first application tonight, Al Hallibi has recused himself. Will be Hans Lindenhovas, our Planning Board alternate. I am Mike Nyhan. Glenn Hyde. David Cross. And Michael Leone. On our side table, our Town Engineer is Michael Hanscom. Our Building Department Manager is Paul Wanzunreid. And our Planning Board Council is Matthew Piston. Our Recording Secretary tonight is Andrew Hewlett. First application is, first two applications, is the application of Bell Atlantic Mobile Systems LLC, 1275 John Street, Suite 100, West Henrietta, New York, 14586. The applicant, Sherry T. Barone and John H. Tesch, CEO Crown Castle, 4017 Washington Road, PMB 331, McMurray, Pennsylvania, 15317. Owner for a special use permit to co-locate on an existing telecommunications tower, property located at 918 Childlight Scottsville Road in the AC District. And also the same applicants and owners for approval for a preliminary site plan for improvements to the existing telecommunications tower property located at 918 Childlight Scottsville Road in the AC District.
Good evening, Board. My name is Jeff Twitty.
I'm an attorney with Nixon Peabody here tonight on behalf of Verizon Wireless and Crown Castle. As was stated by the chairman, we're seeking site plan approval, preliminary site plan approval and a special use permit for this project. It's a co-location of an antenna array on an existing tower at 918 Scottsville Childlight Road. It's a Verizon Wireless antenna. I believe that there are two or three existing carriers already on that tower. I know T-Mobile co-located on that tower a couple of years ago. We're looking to do the same. We're not going to expand the height of the tower. It's currently 150 feet. We're not going to cause any changes to the existing right-of-way gravel access drive that's on that property, nor are we going to expand the compound itself. We will be adding a new concrete slab for a diesel generator that will be on the property within the bounds of that current lease area, but we'll be installing our equipment cabinets on an existing slab that's on the property. So I'm happy to answer any questions you all may have tonight.
Thank you. I don't have any questions right now.
I'm good.
The array, you had a diagram of the array. There's three of them on there now. The third one on the bottom is the one that will be Verizon's, correct?
That sounds right. I can actually turn to the elevation drawing and confirm that for you.
All right. The drawing also shows that it's the exact same size and look as the other arrays. Is that accurate?
That's accurate.
Won't be any difference in size?
No.
Okay. Any additional equipment on the ground that would, you'd need to expand the footprint of the current equipment?
So there will be new equipment on the ground, you know, cables from the array going down the tower and a new equipment cabinet, a new generator as well, but it will not expand the footprint of the compound itself.
Okay. The existing fencing won't change at all?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. Glenn? No questions?
Jeff, any issues, any noise associated with that diesel generator? There's not a lot of receptors out there, right? Kind of in the middle of nowhere.
Yep. I mean, the diesel will generate noise when it's cut on, you know, if there's ever an prolonged power outage. I think we're set pretty far back in that property, so it won't be any noise that would go beyond the property line, but there's a potential for noise from the generator when it runs rarely.
Rarely, right? Probably starts once a week or once a month just to test itself?
If that.
I'm okay. It's pretty far off the road.
Probably not louder than the throughway noise.
That's very true, Matt. Yep, it's right next to the throughway as well. Thank you.
No questions.
Side table? Any questions or comments? No? This time I'll open the public hearing. Any comments or questions from the audience? Seeing none, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing portion of the application.
Second?
Yes.
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 I also vote yes. Any further discussion on the application? Looked pretty straightforward to me. They're just simply adding an array. Okay. Changes. Paul, were there any conditions you wanted to set for this, for the preliminary or the special use permit? I didn't see any.
They have to commit to 1% of construction cost to the landscaping.
Okay. Do you understand that?
So the construction costs, we have to contribute 1%?
Or provide a landscaping plan where you provide additional landscaping to the project.
Okay. Is that anywhere in the town code? Or would, I assume it'd be in the resolution? Okay.
Yeah, the answer is yes.
It is in the town code.
The answer is yes. I'm trying to get in the code section.
All right. I appreciate that.
That was behind your time, Paul.
And then, has a final been paid for for preliminary site plan?
The application shows that, yeah.
It does? Okay.
And one more thing from the town side. We did get a letter from the Town Engineer late last week. We prepared written comments, written responses, if you all would like them.
Okay, thank you. You have no problem complying with the Town Engineer comments? Or any comments from the county planning?
Yep. It should not be a problem complying with these comments, so that's essentially what our response reads.
Okay, great. So as far as seeker goes, I'll make a motion to declare the Board Lead Agency based on evidence and information presented to this, at this meeting. Determine the application being an listed action with no significant environmental impact. Do I have a second?
Second?
Yes.
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 I also vote yes. So for the condition of the special use permit, I don't have any conditions, so the only conditions I would have would be for the preliminary and final site plan approval.
And Town Engineer approval, right? Mike, you check the calcs on the structural analysis of the tower?
I looked at the assumptions. I guess I know how the programming that's needed is to fully check.
They're going to certify that the tower can hold up the weight of the antennas, right?
You received a letter to that effect, I believe?
Yes, that's Exhibit G in the application.
There's no ban required for decommissioning? If there is any decommissioning required?
Sorry, can I repeat?
There's none required by the town, I believe, Paul? No? Okay. Were there any other conditions on the original special use permit? That'll be one of the conditions on this one, that all previous conditions, right?
Boilerplate condition.
Right. Yeah, okay. But for the special use permit, I'm not...
For the applicant's sake, it is 500-41C.
Thank you. But like you said, Mike, just say that it's all, right? So for conditions, I have...
Conditions, yeah.
All right. So for conditions, I have approval is subject to final approval by the Town Engineer and the Commissioner of Public Works. The Town Engineer and the Commissioner of Public Works must be given copies of any correspondence with other approving agencies. All previous conditions imposed by this board that are still pertinent to the application remain in effect. The applicant shall provide landscape equivalent to 1% of the total project cost. Any other conditions?
Building permit required.
Building permit required. The applicant shall comply with all pertinent Monroe County review committee comments as The applicant shall comply with all required life safety conditions and permits from the Building permits should not be issued prior to the applicant complying with all conditions. The application is subject to all required permits, inspections and code compliance Any additional implications outside those? Okay, so with those conditions, the application of Bell Atlantic Mobile Systems LLC, 1275 John Street, Suite 100, West Henrietta, New York, 14586. Applicant, Sherry T. Barone and John H. Tesch, CEO Crown Castle, 40117 Washington Road, PMB 331, McMurray, Pennsylvania, 15317. Owner for a special use permit to co-locate on the existing telecommunications tower property located at 918 Childlight Scottsville Road in the AC District. Do I have a second?
Second?
Yes.
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 I also vote yes. With those conditions, the application of Bell Atlantic Mobile Systems LLC, 1275 John Street, Suite 100, West Henrietta, New York, 14586. The applicant, Sherry T. Barone and John H. Tesch, CEO Crown Castle, 40117 Washington Road, PMB 331, McMurray, Pennsylvania, 15317. Owner for preliminary site plan approval with waiver of final for improvements to the existing telecommunications tower property located at 918 Childlight Scottsville Road in the AC District. Second?
Second?
Yes.
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 I also vote yes. This is approved?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the application of DDS Companies, Ed Martin, 45 Hendrix Road, West Henrietta, New York, 14586. The applicant, 2G LLC, 1891 Scottsville Road, Rochester, New York, 14623. Owner for preliminary site plan approval to construct a 15,000 square foot warehouse facility, property located at 1891 Scottsville Road in the LA District.
Good evening. My name is Ed Martin. I'm an engineer with DDS, representing Turner Underground in their application. Before you, you're familiar with the site. It was just originally constructed some six, seven years ago. They've experienced tremendous success and would like to construct an onsite warehouse, 100 feet by 150 feet, to store a lot of the equipment that you now see stored around the perimeter of the parking lot. We have met with your Conservation Board, and it was very productive, and at the risk of speaking for them, I would say it was very well received. We provide additional landscaping along the west boundary to the tune of at least 1% of the construction cost. It's relatively straightforward. We're rerouting some utilities onsite, sewer lateral and the water supply around it. We do eliminate five parking spaces, but we provide nine new. Your code requires additional parking for this, so pending your decision tonight, we will approach the ZBA and request an area variance to allow the parking that's out there. The parking that's needed is primarily for employees. Mr. Turner is not enlarging his operation per se. He's just trying to create an area where he can store this equipment that, as I said, is now stored around the perimeter. We do provide dark sky compliant lighting, building mounted. We can talk with the Turners about making some of those motion, excuse me, motion activated if needed. There are some exit points along the rear of the building, so I think those need to stay on, but otherwise we could have the front lights be activated. We do provide a small onsite stormwater management area to the east of the building. It's not required for the DEC. Our soil disturbance is well below the threshold at which the permit is required, and that's really it. Be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Joe?
Yeah, a couple of questions. I see the parking spots are land banked up by the building. However, and I don't know that it's, since we're not building them, I don't know that it's really necessary, but they seem like they wouldn't be really usable parking spaces. So I think, I'm glad that you're not building them, and I guess I would be concerned about maybe the width of the road there, as those larger vehicles kind of snake out of there, making sure that, I don't know where your actual line of pavement is in that. So is it actually just the existing 24-foot driveway?
The new spaces are completely outside of the existing pavement, completely. And we'd be happy to not ever construct those. I don't think he'll ever need them, but we were trying to make some good faith effort to offset the five.
Show where they would go. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. And then, out at the road, I know one thing is, there is a sign up for trucks entering. I think you said six years ago. I thought it was like four, so I trust you're right. I know one of the things we looked at a lot was the line of sight, right, and the traffic, and that it's 55 through there, and people pulling out, and I know somebody who drives down there every day, and those trucks, when they pull out, there's a good, you know, their sign is there, and people are kind of aware of it at this point. I just wondered if there's ever any conversation or consideration to maybe widen that curve at the end of the, you know, broaden the width of the end of the driveway?
Right.
Yeah, to get them kind of a little bit headed in, a little bit more in the right direction? So when they do pull out, it's more of accelerating and less turning, you know, that kind of a thing? So just a consideration or a question? And then I guess, Paul, just to confirm, I see a signs going up. I'm assuming they got a permit for that, right? Cool. Okay, looks nice. Yep. That's all I got for now.
I may have this confused, but wasn't there, three or four years ago, a staging area put down on the west end of where Monroe Tree Surgeons is for you guys?
On Ballentine, you mean? Yeah, we did that. That's fully constructed, and that's equipment that is more appropriately stored outside. This is meant for more equipment to be stored inside.
Or somebody said they did that, though, so they're going to have to go through all of this in the future.
Well, I was the one that got that approved, so that was, I think, three years ago. We got that site approved.
All right. Is that in full operation down there now?
I don't know if it's in full operation. We're very close to the end. I've been in contact with Mr. Wanzunreid about making sure that everything gets transferred from the old lot to the new lot, so that's been going on this summer. I know that for sure. And if you drive by, there was a lot of comment about the berm will never get built that high. It got built that high and then some. You cannot see the parking lot.
Well, if I remember correctly, the residents down there had a big issue with any light fixtures and your equipment running naturally, but...
Yep. Yeah, I drive there often, and I'm really impressed with how you really can't see it. You can see some of the equipment at the old lot, which is why Mr. Wanzunreid, you know, stressed to get that moved over to the new lot, so...
All right. Okay. No questions?
Just a couple. So the new construction materials and color will match the existing? Is that correct?
It will. Did you receive, you should have received renderings, so it's same color, same materials as the existing building?
Okay. And then, thanks for bringing up the lot on Ballentine, because I remember a condition there was that the, kind of the equipment and the trailers on the old lot would be moved behind the new berm, which is very nice, by the way.
Yeah.
So we wouldn't see all that back there. And that's happening?
In the process of moving.
Thank you, Ed.
You're welcome.
Michael?
No questions.
Any comments from the side table?
No additional comments.
Okay. This time I'll open the public hearing. Any comments from the public? Seeing none, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second?
Yes.
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 I also vote yes. Any further discussion on the application? We did receive the comments from the Conservation Board. They were very happy with the landscaping at the new site. And Paul, did you read them relative to the comments? That's what you're working on? Thank you. No further discussion. For seeker, I'll make a motion to declare the Board Lead Agency. And as far as seeker, and based on evidence and information presented at this meeting, determine the application being an listed action with no environmental significant impact. Do I have a second?
Second?
Yes.
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 I also vote yes. As far as conditions, also, Paul, is this good for a waiver of final?
Yes.
As far as conditions, approval is subject to final approval by the Town Engineer and the Commissioner of Public Works. Town Engineer and the Commissioner of Public Works must be given copies of any correspondence with other approving agencies. All previous conditions imposed by this board that are still pertinent to the application remain in effect. The applicant to comply with all pertinent Monroe County review committee comments. The applicant to comply with all required life safety conditions and permits from the Town Fire Marshal. Pending approval, the Zoning Board of Appeals for all required variances. The applicant to comply with all conditions of the Zoning Board of Appeals is applicable. Any signage changed shall comply with the town code, including obtaining signed permits. The application shall supply a landscape plan drawn by a licensed architect, along with the checklist of the Conservation Board. The Planning Board affirms the recommendations of the Conservation Board and requests the applicant to comply with these recommendations. Upon completion of the project, the applicant shall submit a landscape certificate of compliance to the Building Department from the landscape architect certifying that all approved plantings have been furnished and installed in substantial conformance with the approved landscape plan. Building permits should not be issued prior to applicant complying with all conditions. Application is subject to all required permits, inspections and code compliance regulations. Any other conditions for this application? Okay, seeing none. With those conditions, the application of DDS Companies, Ed Martin, 45 Hendrix Road, West Henrietta, New York, 14586. Applicant, 2G LLC, 1891 Scottsville Road, Rochester, New York, 14623. Owner for preliminary site plan approval with waiver of final to construct a 15,000 square foot warehouse facility, property located at 1891 Scottsville Road in the LA District.
Second?
Yes.
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 I also vote yes. This is approved, Ed?
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Have a nice night. Next two applications are the application of Soul America Energy, 190 Ottley Drive, NE Studio H, Atlanta, Georgia, 30324. Applicant, Kohli Capital, 6 LLC, Subash Kohli, 2590 West Ridge Road, Suite 10, Rochester, New York, 14626. Owner for special use permit to allow 3 megawatt solar energy system, property located at 243 Archer Road in the LA District. The application of the same applicant and owner for preliminary site plan approval to construct a 3 megawatt solar energy system at property located 243 Archer Road in the
Good evening. My name is Joe Hens. I'm a civil engineer with Ingles and Associates representing Soul America Energy. This project was last in front of the Board, I think, back in June, and we were waiting on the 30-day seeker coordination. The Town declared themselves lead agent, and, you know, the 30 days has elapsed. We did make some modifications since the last time you saw this proposal in response to some of the Town Engineering comments. Specifically, we added some details on the outflows for the dry swells, which run through the project for our stormwater treatment. Our outlet control structures were proposed to be overflow wears, however, based on the most recent comment letter from your engineer, they're requesting a replacement of that to catch basins, like solid structures, due to erosion concerns. So, you know, we're in agreement with that change, and I think there were a couple other minor technical comments, but in general, I think we can meet all those engineering requirements. One outstanding item which prevented us from having our special meeting last month was we were waiting on final sign-off from OPRHP on the seeker's side of things. In July, we had our archaeologists go out into the site and perform a Phase 1A, 1B archaeological survey for the whole area of development. They prepared that survey. They had no findings while they were on site, and actually, just today, we had uploaded everything to CRIS, and that's the state OPRHP resource system, and they sent us a letter of no fact today. So we provided that to Paul, a copy, kind of last minute, but we did get that in hand, so it was a big step for us. Correll from Soul America is also here, so we'd be happy to answer any questions or any other, you know, developments on the project, since we're last in front of the Board. Thank you.
Joe? How long would construction take?
Six to nine months, no more than nine months.
So the berm, the landscape berm, looks different from the last drawing I recall. Can you talk a little bit about what that planting, it looks like there's three rows? What's the height of that berm? What's the height of the trees? And what are the species?
Yeah, so we're currently not proposing a berm, just due to concerns about survivability of the trees within the berm. A lot of times when you're planting them in there, there's just not enough water, especially as you've seen how dry the summer's been. So we're currently proposing eight-foot-tall evergreen trees. It's a mix of eastern red cedar and green giant arborvitae. You can see, maybe at a distance, it's kind of like an eye test, but you can see the different symbology there, so it kind of alternates. There's three rows of trees. Each row is spaced 15 feet apart to fill that 50-foot vegetated buffer, and then the trees themselves within each row are spaced 25 feet apart. So by the time you have that alternating, it's going to make a complete vegetated, you know, hedge essentially, that's evergreen around the entire site. Obviously, we're going to be in front of the ZBA, assuming we can get a conditional approval from the Planning Board, and they're going to need to review the variance, the area variance we're looking for, for the western side and the northern side. We're still proposing screening along the northern side with the same alternating scheme, but just due to the position of the solar array, we don't have the space for that full 50-foot width. One thing I did gloss over in my presentation is there was some discussion at the last meeting about additional line of sight drawings. The Board members had, so... Ingles and Associates, when we first developed this project, did a field topography survey for, obviously, the area of development. However, to expand the line of sight, I used county LiDAR to get some more elevation data off-site. I apologize, I don't remember this gentleman's name, but he was at the last Planning Board meeting, and he had specific concerns about line of sight from his property further north on Archer Road, so we included a line of sight from his property, and also a line of sight that runs just north-south from the town property to the north. That's proposed to be a park, I believe, at some point, and then from Beaver Road. So those are the additional line of sight diagrams there. And we also...
If you could, could you show or describe what the line of sight shows? So what's the visibility from each of those locations? There were the town park, the gentleman's house, Archer Road, as well as the Beaver Road location.
So then, yeah, the north-south view is screened primarily by just the elevation difference in the site, because the trees are positioned on the north side, and you're looking over a drop in elevation, pretty significant, around 450, down, you know, 30 feet to the other end of the project. It's not visible on the north side of the site. The south side, similarly, because the trees are positioned so closely to the property line, you're looking into the tree rather than looking at the array, right? If we had moved this back, you're not going to get as much effective screening, because you're trying to screen 40 feet, but when you move that vegetation closer to the house... vegetation closer to the house, you get, it's more effective. The one area, I believe this is line of sight three, I can't read that from here, but by memory, I know that's line of sight three. The trees here at eight-foot tall, there's about two feet of missing coverage of the array. So as those trees grow, the screening's going to be more effective, but you are going to see the back part of the array. Just again, because that elevation changes increases as we get close to American Packaging. So, I guess the only thing for the board to consider there potentially, rather than doing a berm, we could propose maybe taller trees along Archer Road in those areas. But I think that would be a better option, just in my experience in survivability versus, you know, trying to plant trees in a berm tends to be an issue.
Yeah, because I would say I've seen no less than eight solar arrays probably that I noticed around New York State since you guys first came here that have a berm and really small arborvitae's that are like brand-new and too small and they're spaced too far apart.
Yeah.
So, that's a fail, right? To your point, I'd rather spend three times the amount on arborvitae's and not do a berm if you can get the right height.
Right.
Right? But that's where, you know, that's tricky. So, I don't have that drawing handy, so everything you explained makes sense from what we talked about before. And I think the concern still was is that, like, and you you just said that from Archer Road, there's still about a two-foot gap where you can still see some from-
Yeah, just do the elevation difference.
Yeah. And so that would be, you know, from Harrell's presentation, previous presentation, that would be like standing in those people's front yards looking across Archer. So it's like five-foot
We-
eye level?
Yeah, when we do the eye height, we assume a five-and-a-half-foot-
Five-six, okay.
Yeah. From a first floor. So, you know, we can't screen unfortunately from someone's second-story of a home, but that would be like you're standing in your front yard on Archer Road, looking out across the project.
Okay, I'm good for right now.
Well, the last meeting I was at, I recall one of the last items of discussion was a fact of a host benefit package out of his deal. I don't know where those conversations stand.
I'll let Harrell speak to that.
Part of what, but I'd kind of like to know.
Sure. So the city, the town presented draft host community benefit agreement to us. It took a little while because of their legal review, but they got that to us last week. So now that is in review by our legal team and leadership. Me and Mr. Dunning spoke this morning and we have agreement in spirit. I also had a number of RFI for him that I need to, that I take back to my leadership as we assess this opportunity. But I told him in spirit, we're in agreement. But we're probably going to want to negotiate some of the terms and conditions. He made it clear that, you know, he's prepared to stand firm on his things, but he's open to negotiation. And so we'll take that and we'll take it from there.
I guess what I'm hearing here this evening is that we can't make a decision until you guys get this thing figured out correctly.
Well, we can condition it upon the town board approval. Which I would intend to do.
Yeah, I thought about that too. And I'd be okay with a condition that the, you know, I think as long as town leadership, the town board is okay with the negotiation. That's fine. That's on them. But I'm glad you did present something to the town. Because we did, yeah, we did ask-
Yeah, the town-
Yeah.
Told us what they wanted.
Well, we presented, we presented a draft to you and, okay. Gotcha. You're talking.
Yes, we're talking, we're talking, yes.
No, I think that's it for right now.
Just to clarify, because it's been a while, I forgot. I think in one of the first meetings, we talked about the town's comprehensive plan. And the land, future land use for that area was planned residential development. Have you ever approached the town relative to the planned residential development in that area?
We have not, no.
Okay. Paul, are you aware of that ever happening? Okay, all right. I know it is. Talking about what the comprehensive plan shows as that land use. That's why I'm asking if that's ever been. The landowner was here the last time. I thought he had mentioned that, but the landowner's not here this time.
By knowledge, no housing has ever been proposed for that.
Okay. All right.
Maybe back, previous owner, I think you might have done, but that was 20 years ago.
Okay, thank you. I don't have any other questions.
I'm good. I'm good, Mike.
I don't have any questions.
Anything from the side table?
I do.
Yes.
What's the rate of growth of the trees?
We assume a buck per year for the green giant arborvitae, the eastern red cedar.
Are you still proposing any landscaping on the western board?
We're not, we're not currently proposing any landscaping there. That's where we're looking for the variance. We are theoretically, we're taking some credit for the existing vegetation there. And also, if you look at, I don't have an aerial with me, but if you look at American Packaging, they already have some screening plantings on their properties. So it didn't really make sense to us to double that up.
And what's the distance of landscaping in the south? Is that an accurate?
That's at the, I believe the setback line is the code requirement. So it's compliant with the town code. Yep.
No further questions?
No questions? No? Hens, no? Okay. At this time, I will open the public hearing. Any comments or questions from the audience?
Hi, Brenda Bishop, 972 Paul Road. I'm a Chi-Li resident. I do have a couple of questions. First of all, my understanding is that there should be a sign to the public, letting the public know that there's a hearing tonight. I drove by and I didn't see that. Can someone please tell me where that is?
Sure, Paul, I believe that sign was up.
What?
The sign?
Yeah.
Where?
It was right outside of Vista Villas as of last week.
Outside of where?
Where you enter Crestwood Lane, where you enter into Vista Villas.
Okay, on that same side?
No, Archer, Vista Villas.
Mm-hmm.
Right here.
Okay, so I just drove by there and didn't see it, so.
It was there.
Is it still there now?
I haven't been by there this week to notice it. I know I was there last week because I was over there doing some other things, so.
Right. I would think it should be up until the time of the hearing so that the public-
That's impossible. And it is. We, yes, I agree with you in, by the code, yes, it should be up. But winds, the state, who knows, hooliganism, they come and go.
Is there any documentation to prove that it was even up?
Other than me standing here saying, I saw the sign?
Correct.
No.
I saw it.
Okay.
Just to continue there, Paul, are the residents in the area notified by mail?
Yes.
Of the hearing?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Within 100 feet.
Okay.
All residents within 100 feet are notified by mail per code.
100 feet?
Notification on the front bulletin board and in the daily record, which is the publication that the town uses for notifications.
Okay, I'll have to watch that more carefully. Another thing, has there been any unbiased legitimate study done on what the effects of solar panels on land is? Because I've heard that the land becomes contaminated. Is there any study that's been done?
I can't cite a study. Can you go?
I would ask Mr. Johnson right there.
Okay, if you could answer that.
Yes, I believe that, Paul, I think you have a copy of the presentation that we made. Yeah, we showed it in the back, and then in those section, there are studies that are cited. That's a number of things. There is a lot of misinformation out there about solar. So in the effort to get ahead of those outside of solar studies, but I can take the information forward.
Yes, not, not studies done by Soul America, of course, but, okay. All right. I think that's it for the moment. Okay, I think. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? At this time, seeing none, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing portion of the hearing.
Second.
Yes.
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 I also vote yes. As far as Seeker, as you recall, this was a type-one action with a coordinated review. Received responses from interested agencies. None had objection to the town planning board acting as lead agency. And the comments that were included in the package that we have, as well as the county comments and all of the comments from SHPO, we did receive the letter relative to the archaeological study that was done in that area. So with that, I will review the form for the long form, part two, Seeker, the impact on land. Proposed action may involve the construction and or physical alteration of land surfaces on the proposed site. That is yes. However, if you were to review each of the items below, none of those items had a moderate or large impact. They all had a small or no impact on the land. Impact on geological features, there were no impact on geological features. The impacts on surface water, again, the proposed action may affect one or more wetlands or other surface water bodies, streams, rivers, ponds, or lakes. There was one stream, as you recall, at the front of this project and that with our town engineer. And they have applied for a permit to put a pipe underneath the roadway that will go there. So the impacts on the surface water, as you can read each of these items below that have a small or no impact on that stream. The impact on groundwater, there is no indication that there'll be any impact on groundwater. The impact on flooding, again, none of the features of the retention pond that the town maintains for Vista Villas that comes over, as well as the stream that goes down through that area. So there is no impact on flooding in this area based on all the information we have. The impacts on air, the proposed action will not have, it's not a state regulation or emission source, so there is no exhaust of any type from this solar array. So the impact is no or minor. The impacts on planting animals, this is the result of loss of flora or fauna, which will not be. In fact, they're proposing to plant goat-friendly, I believe, plantings as recommended by our Conservation Board. So there would be no or a small impact on that area. The impact on agricultural resources, proposed action may impact agricultural resources. That is an agricultural area. But the impact is small in the back area of this based on the size for groups of soil one through four. And none of the items down below had indicated that it will have an impact on those resources. So no or small impact may occur. The impact on aesthetic resources certainly has the possibility of doing that, however, with the screenings that have been provided, as well as the elevations to show the screenings of that area. There will be the one area that will need the variance, or the two areas that need a variance from our planning board, but based on zoning board. I'm sorry, zoning board, you're correct. Based on the information provided, there'd be no or a small impact in that area. Impact on historic and archaeological resources. That was reviewed with an archaeological dig, I believe, at the site. And SHPO has given us a letter indicating that there is no impact on historical archaeological areas. Open space and recreation. There's no loss of recreational opportunities or open space in this designated area. So that also has no or a small impact that could occur. Critical environment areas, the proposed action may be located within or adjacent to a critical environmental area. This is not near or adjacent to any critical environmental areas. The impact on transportation, there should have no impact on the transportation systems due to the fact that it's just an array. Impact on energy, the proposed action may cause an increase in the use of any form of energy. Of course, that is no because they're there to produce energy. The impacts on noise, odor, and light, there'd be no light emitted from this area, noise or odors. So there'd be no impact on the environment as a result of that. Impact on human health, the proposed action may have an impact on human health from exposure to new or existing sources of contaminants. Based on the studies that were in the Soul America Energy presentation at our first meeting, studies have indicated that there is no exposure based on a solar array, and there is nothing else being emitted from the solar array. And the consistency with community plans, proposed action is not consistent with adopted land use plans, that is still considered an LI zone in that area, which this could be a permitted use in that area. Consistency with community character, proposed action or the proposed project is inconsistent with the existing community character. So to read through some of those, proposed action may replace or eliminate existing facilities, structures, or areas of historic importance to the community, which it does not. Demand for additional community services, which it will not, or have a small impact. Displace affordable or low-income housing in this area, which is not proposed for that area. Proposed action may interfere with the use or enjoyment of officially recognized public resources, which it does not. And the proposed action is inconsistent with the predominant architectural scale and character, which it is not. And the proposed action is inconsistent with the character of the existing natural landscape. I think the plantings, et cetera, will there'd be a small or no impact on that. Any comments or disagreement on any of the seeker items? Okay, for then, based on that, for information, I'll make a motion to declare the board lead agency as far as Seeker. And based on evidence and information presented to this meeting, determine the application to be a negative declaration for any environmental impact. Do I have a second?
Second.
Yes.
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 I also vote yes. As far as conditions, let's see. Oh, is this also a waiver of final on this one? Do you know? It was? So the conditions of approval, the approval is subject to final approval by the town engineer and the commissioner of public works. Town engineer and the commissioner of public works must be given copies of any correspondence with other approving agencies. Applicant to comply with all pertinent monor county development review committee comments. Applicant to comply with our required life safety conditions and permits from the town fire marshal. It's pending approval of the zoning board of appeals of all required variances. Applicant to comply with all conditions of the zoning board of appeals as applicable. The applicant shall supply a landscape plan drawn by a licensed landscape architect, along with the required checklist of the Conservation Board for review and recommendation that has been done. The planning board affirms a recommendation of the Conservation Board for the landscaping plan and requests that the applicant comply with these recommendations. Upon completion of the project, the applicant shall submit a landscape certificate of compliance to the building department from the landscape architect, certifying that all approved plantings have been furnished and installed in substantial conformance to the approved landscape plan. Building permits shall not be issued prior to the applicant complying with all conditions. The application is subject to all required permits, inspections, code compliance regulations. And the applicant shall enter into a host community benefit agreement that is acceptable to the town of Chi-Li Town Board and the town board approve a resolution to that effect. Any other conditions of approval?
Condition of host?
Yeah. Yes.
Paul, when a project goes through and they do the letter of credit for the landscaping, based on the construction schedule of this, does the- based on the construction schedule of this, does the one-year warranty on the vegetation go from CFO or CFC, or does it go from when they were originally planted?
Sorry, what one year? I think the word you're looking for is perpetuity.
Is that what it is? Okay.
Yeah, it's in perpetuity.
Okay.
It's not based on the years that they've been. All landscaping has to be maintained in perpetuity. So if the trees die, they have to replace them.
Thank you for the clarification. Any other? Okay, seeing none, with those conditions, the application of Soul America, 190 Ottley Drive, NE Studio H, Atlanta, Georgia, 30324, applicant Kohli Capital 6 LLC, Subash Kohli, 2590 Westridge Road Suite 10, Rochester, New York 14624, owner for a special use permit to allow a three-megawatt solar energy system at property located at 243 Archer Road in the LA District.
Second?
Yes.
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 I also vote yes. The application of Soul America Energy, 190 Ottley Drive, NE Studio H, Atlanta, Georgia, 30324, applicant Kohli Capital 6 LLC, Subash Kohli, 2590 Westridge Road Suite 10, Rochester, New York 14624, owner for preliminary site plan approval with waiver of final to construct a three-megawatt solar energy system at the property located at 243 Archer Road in the LA District.
Second?
Yes.
Yes.
Yep.
Yes.
Yes.
I also vote yes, this is approved? I'll make a motion to accept the meeting minutes from our July meeting.
Yes.
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 I wasn't here, so no vote, I guess.
I also vote yes. Abstain.
Abstain courteously.
Courteously?
Abstain courteously, Sandra.
You did what?
I abstained courteously from voting.
That was very nice that you abstained.
Thanks to the club.
Reading is adjourned.